I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, um, the last, uh, looks like four cents.
Yeah, I second it. Mr. Eric Bailey?
All in favor.
Pardon?
All in favor.
All in favor. Aye.
Are we supposed to call Lynn?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to.
You gotta say all in favor.
Uh, Chairman O'Hara is actually actively currently, he had a breakthrough COVID event, so he's actually sick with symptoms, so he's in pretty rough shape, so keep him in your thoughts, so. He won't be here, mine, I'm here next week either.
We'll pray, we'll pray for him.
All right. We have some culvert permits to start off with. First one's Jeremy Booty. An extension on his.
Okay.
1221 240th Street.
I'll just make one motion for both of them. You need a motion for separate, Kendall?
Okay. Next one's a Joseph Yoder. This one's in Devon, and I don't have an exact address yet for him.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Public Works to install a culvert at 1221 240th Street. And also the second one in City of Devon. I hear a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one's a, a thank you from Mr. Plaster in Mightville.
He's a pretty good fellow.
Yes, yes. Illinois get thank yous, so I want to make sure you got.
Do we need to sign issuance or find one?
You need to sign.
Did I sign the wrong one?
You need to sign one of these.
Okay.
There you go. Yep.
Keep picking.
I think you got it signed, didn't you Jim? No, there it goes. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's nice of Steve.
Make sure you have a copy of that. Well, let's get down to everything else we have going on. Uh, Yale Road, we were able to go up last week, um, and Mill reclaimed the bad areas that, that had completely, um, blown out or what have you, it had gotten to a point that we needed to address them. So, those have been, at this time, those areas, I'm sure there's gonna be more pop-ups, so.
I'm sure. What was your total footage, you think?
I haven't.
Okay.
It's so many short.
I'm just curious.
So many short areas, um, that we didn't do the long, long stretches, there was a couple of long stretches that we done, but.
Yeah. And bad thing about Yale, it's not gonna go away.
No, it's not, no.
Probably until you really go in and reclaim the whole thing, you're not gonna have a road, but anyway.
I have a sample of the, the base, and it looks, appears like there's XYZ may have been used for the base, I don't know that for a fact, but it sure does appear like that.
Before Jim and I was told that you are correct.
Yeah.
And that's a heavy moisture area, so those signs collect that moisture and that road goes. I don't know the reasoning.
And we.
Anyway.
We also had a, uh, witnessed a haul truck, 60-ton haul truck running up and down that road. So that's not helping that road either, so, um, but anyhow.
Okay.
We're, we're addressing that issue as well, so, just so you know on that. Asphalting, um, due to, let's back up first, let's go to the storm, the heavy rains and what have you that we had. What would that be over a week? Week ago, whenever it was, they're all kind of running together, we've had so many of them, but anyhow, we had to pull off a little bit for two reasons on the asphalt. First, we were low on chips, second, due to all the damage. Do want to let you know, I've been working with Will in case we do get a declaration on that. Got two guys going out, we are surveying everything, documenting it, taking pictures, placing, uh, the bad spots on a map, so we know, so that kind of lets you know there. Now back to asphalt. Said we were low on chips, we went ahead and we're running the crusher, got two crews running, so 16-hour days, the crusher's probably running probably 14, 13, 14 of those hours, so we are getting some chips. Chips produced. Went back to asphalting yesterday, down on 250th, we originally had made it from Arrowhead with the surface coat all the way up to just past the bridge there north of Birch. Got started yesterday about 1:00, noon, somewhere near, we lost the oil bar inside the tumbler, what have you there, so we're repairing that today. Just got word from them that it looks like maybe an easy repair, that we may be back up asphalting today, so.
Well, let me say on 250th, I drove it, excellent job.
Thank you.
And I heard from a resident that lives down there, and yes, they are very appreciative.
Very, very excellent, so thank you.
And, and we're gonna come back to that here in just a second, because the residents, we can actually go there now. Residents are asking if 45 mile an hour speed limit signs can be put up there, I don't know. That somebody, some of them said they were up there before, I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, I've been on the road two or three times coming back from Pittsburgh just to see how it was. It's good, it's really good, and yes, you can drive 100 on it.
Was this a few residents or a lot of them?
The ones that are.
Yeah.
The houses down there that have, what we've done so far, yes, I've heard from.
Uh, Justin?
That's such a narrow road, it's not a bad ideal probably, but.
Yeah, with Susan?
He's on the phone.
Okay.
We can come back to it, I gotta come back to the speed limit.
Okay.
Again here later on.
Maybe Bill knows, um.
Yeah, I don't.
Can text Bill. I mean, what, was the counties, are there county speed limits, I assume there are?
Well, I think it's up to the commissioners.
Right.
County speed limits on roads that aren't posted?
It's whatever the standard state statute is, I'll have it memorized.
Which I think it's 55.
I think it's, yeah.
If it isn't, it's 55?
55.
The way it is, ask you. You've said it like four times, we just have it more.
Yeah, yeah, if it's posted, that's what the speed limit is.
And if we get requests from city, then it's up to commission discretion to lower it.
Yes.
Okay.
In some cases, you know, that's probably a good idea, depending on where people live and.
Well, I think 55 is too fast on gravel roads and most of the paved roads in the county.
Well, he's referring to 250th, it's a good road now, of course, it's a narrow road, and the residents requesting us to drop it to 45. Which is a reasonable request.
It's not unreasonable.
No, it's not. Is that what you want to do?
It's completely up to you, if you want to wait on it, think about it, whatever you want to do, we're, we're still asphalting down there, so it's up to you.
You want to talk to some of your neighbors down there? Okay.
Let's do that.
Let him talk to some of his neighbors.
At least it's out and on the.
And bring it up next week, would you please?
Okay. Let me circle that one. Strong possibility, we may be done crushing at Beth by the end of the week. We did our blast out at Blake last week, 42,459 tons.
Perfect, that's perfect.
So, anyhow.
Have you usually blast pretty good, that's a good place to?
Yes.
One up north and that one, the crush good.
Yeah, it, this one, we had a good blast.
Good.
Got one little area that we had some surface rock or what have you, but it was a good blast.
You went to the south, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yep, yep. Gordon Park signs, we'll have them installed this week, there's three of them, so just, they needed it done by August 1st, we will have them done this week. Talked about the heavy rains. Also, another speed limit request, and I don't know if this one, if you would want to do temporary or not, down on 130th, it's gravel from 39 Highway to Arrowhead. Due to the bridge being out on 39 Highway, there is a ton of traffic taking 130th to go over to Calvary, and then Calvary to two miles over to Seven around. And I, I've heard from the residents, two for sure. They've requested 30 mile an hour during that stretch, I don't know. It's what, whatever you think on that, I do know that as dry as it's been, or when it does get dry, it is so dusty out there. And there is a lot of traffic using that, including semis.
Your recommendation, 30 or 35?
I'm, I'm good with either.
I like 35, but.
And that's fine, too, I think they would appreciate that, just anything to try and slow them down. And maybe you want to just do temporary during construction time.
Well, I can list it as that, or you can come back and say construction's over and, okay. I'll make a motion to allow Public Works Department to post 35 mile per hour signs on 130th between 39 and Arrowhead, and report back in after construction is finished.
And also on that, and I didn't say that, I don't know if you want to do the same on, uh, Calvary from 130th to Seven, there's no houses there, but that's, it's still pretty narrow, we got the one-lane bridge, and it's gravel.
Okay. Also on that, I'll add 35 mile per hour on Calvary from 130th to Highway 7?
Yep.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't know if we have to do that or not.
I don't either, we both said, we'll just cover.
Cover yourselves there.
Yes, sir.
There's nothing wrong with that. Update on the beans, we met with the Bureau of Waste Management, Jim and I, Dustin Hall was out there, there was Emery Weems and Samuel Boez from the Bureau. We did identify an area for the composting, um, still waiting to hear back whether they're gonna have us, make us haul the beans off or not.
Okay.
I called Friday, didn't get an answer, but I did get back, or Emery did get with me yesterday, and they're still talking about it, so.
And they make reference to hauling them off. We could move and just assault waste, can we, or can we not?
If we, we could.
And haul them off.
And haul them off that-a-way?
Yeah.
Yes.
Might say a lot of dump truck cost, or belly dump, whatever.
Either way, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna.
Either way, it's gonna cost.
We're gonna have to haul.
One thing about taking them out in county, they won't weigh nothing, so, or tons of fees.
They may, with the water and stuff that's in.
Yeah, if you're getting packed in there, good, so, either way, that's your call.
Yeah. So, and maybe they'll let us land upon them or something, I, I don't, we're gonna have to cross that path.
I enjoyed their reaction, I reminded them Charlie Maller will bait it.
So we're gonna have to see how, what they come back with this, it would be nice if they would let us move them over to the composting site, which is 50 to 75 yards from where they're currently located.
I hope so. They're pretty, they're pretty good to work with.
Very good to work with, so. Anyhow, that's update on that. Last deal I have for you, and this one, KDOT has called for their, um, off-system bridge projects, if we have any bridges that we want to submit for. I was wanting to go over, give you an opportunity last week, so you could think about it a week, we didn't have the meeting last week, so these have to be turned in by the end of the, of, uh, the week, this week, so.
Is this where they pay 175,000 or something, or is there a percentage, I don't remember?
They pay 80%, we pay 20. I've been talking with Dave Beach on this, he's helped me through this quite a bit, got several emails here from him. On a couple of the bridges that we've identified, uh, that would qualify, and those are at 160th and Fern, 120th and Birch. And these are just preliminary estimates, to do the project, it'd be somewhere around 400,000, give or take, and our share would be around 140,000, give or take, plus or minus.
That's for both of them or each?
Each, yeah. I, budget-wise, I, I don't see the 140 in mind at this time, but these projects are not awarded until fiscal year 2023, which is July next year for KDOT. So I don't know if we want to submit, or if you would like for us to submit these, or if we want to wait a year and try and build up our funds, um.
Can we back out?
That I don't know, the answer on that.
I would be interested in moving forward on maybe one, if we can back out, we don't have the money.
Yeah.
Because under our budget restraint, it's tough, so.
I understand, yes. But at some point, we're gonna have to start.
Do something, yeah.
And, and that's another thing, 60th and Grand, um, Dave Beach will be here today to look at it, the flood, or the heavy rains we received here last week done quite a toll on it. We may have to shut it down, and I'm not so sure we can't take it to a low-water crossing.
That's one you guys put in some?
No, it's the one around the corner from it. We done the one going west, this is the one that goes north. Yeah, and the farmers have already made a path to go around.
It's a pretty bad spot right there.
It's pretty bad.
But ideal for low-water crossing.
It, it would be.
Well, and you have to file this by this week?
By Friday, that's, that's why I was hoping we had a meeting last week to, so you guys could think on it for.
A traffic count, which one's worse?
No, it's, no problem.
Which one's the worst, traffic count, you know?
I would say there's probably a little more traffic on the, uh, one on Fern.
160th and Fern.
Because they're getting, we're seeing some from the, the, uh, road being closed, but still, there's a few more houses over that-a-way. It's right there at the 739 junction, just back to the east of that, and you go north about a mile and a half, mile and three-quarters.
I wouldn't have a problem making motion to do, consider one of them with the assumption that Eric will know by Friday if we could back out or not.
Okay.
And if we can't, we probably shouldn't move forward.
Perfect.
I don't think, what, what do you think, Cliff?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion for Public Works Director Eric Bailey to apply for a 80-20 grant with KDOT to replace the bridge 160th and Fern. And also grant Eric the authority to cancel Friday if we cannot back out in 2023, lack of funds.
Perfect.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. I almost said it. Aye.
Good job.
Thank you.
Getting that extra stamp of approval.
Yeah.
All right.
I like, I wish we could do one of them a year.
Absolutely, I think.
We could.
I think we continue to see what we can do on that.
Yeah.
Windmills are, kind of give you an update where we're at here. Components are starting to come in, um, per our road use agreement, excuse me, they filled out their overload permit, I had them fill out one permit for each of the components. So I have nine different components, this was all worked out in the road use agreement, otherwise we would be filling out 630 of these permits, so, um, we have one, one component. Their stage yard will be at 39 Highway and 30th, right there on the corner, and then they'll roll in, they'll be staging, and then they'll be taken directly to the different, different areas, so. We're gonna start seeing them, I think there may have been some rolling yesterday, I'm not 100% positive on that, but I'm pretty sure, and we will start seeing components rolling, rolling in. I want to say there's like nine components to each tower, so.
A bunch.
Yeah, so, just giving you an update where that's at. Also, during the heavy rains or what have you, we had some areas out there that the roads were, um, washed or what have you, and they went above and beyond, and, and helped us out, when we were over in other areas, they helped us out on a couple of our roads over there that we didn't, um, or that they were not using, they went ahead and, uh, bladed them for us, and brought the gravel back, back up out of the ditch, and helped us out a little bit, so I do want to thank them for, for helping and working with us, so. Anyhow, any other questions?
I don't have anything.
Anything for me?
You know, I keep thinking, maybe you might come up with a plan for 2022, a master plan for these ditches, and I've searched, and I've searched, and I've searched, we just need, um.
First thing we got to do is get Mother Nature to cooperate with us.
That's number one.
There's all this rain, I mean, we had plans this year to pull it out, but you know, as wet as it is, it's crazy.
Yeah. But until we do, though, we're just never gonna get caught up, but you're right, Mother Nature's gotta cooperate, number one, but.
But we do have a little bit of a plan for that, when we, yes, so, we will, uh, I'll share that with you when we're ready to.
Good, thank you.
Kick it in gear and get to going with it, so.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Do I need to make a motion removed, Lynn?
Uh, Matt's next, he's here.
Yeah, I'm probably, I'm Matt Quick. Okay, Matt Quick?
Morning.
Okay, so I got a call from Bob Kent, uh, the other day, who is one of the heads of property valuation division with the state, and what they need is what they call a resolution, um, signed by you guys, that basically makes me the interim appraiser, um, for a period of up to six months, until I can get my final certifications and stuff done.
You good with all this?
Well, we, we need to go into executive session for, it, really, I think probably, it could be one or two. I think if it's just gonna be, uh, Mr. Quick talking about his position, there's some negotiations that need to occur, but I think he's also gonna bring up other employees, and how his office is gonna maybe potentially run. So with that, I mean, I would ask that maybe a 15-minute executive session for employee, employee negoti, well, protect their privacy rights, I was thinking negotiations, but we need to, um, protect their individual rights and their privacy, so it'd be the first one.
I make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, would include, um, myself, Commissioner Harris, Justin Meeks, Matt Quick.
That'd be it.
Uh, and we'll do this for 15 minutes, um, so what, 9:37?
I second that motion.
We'll return back.
And we're gonna talk about, um, employee, um, performance issues, salary issues, and we're gonna talk about quite a bit of things, if we got that, so.
Salary issues, performance issues.
Aye.
Aye.
That's the first, uh, I've ever.
I do need to come there and ask a question.
I'm having a look. Uh, heck, I didn't even know my cousin Lynn had a code with her, but it's in protocol. I'm, I'm the last person to know anything. My other cousin, uh, Rhonda, doesn't, my deals play over the queue, I guess they're having a fundraiser for her, and I'm always the last to know. I actually, I'm like, I got 88 in there. The taxes on my 28th, that's like, almost as much as on my 88th, it's in the north. I contacted those states, I think it's only person that was involved, and I don't know Jerry Long, and I don't know Jerry Long's. And he never made it out, they were just, she was probably for the price. No one certified, they didn't get a sign. I guess I'll have to go with county.
We're going back in.
Make a motion to resume.
Well, turn it back on. We're going to need it on, Jimmy. We need it on. Yeah.
Do we both have to say aye to just do it?
Yeah, you need to follow the procedure. Yep. Okay, thank you. We need to--
Wait, 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 wait. We're-- we have the video up and running?
Yeah.
Okay.
Video killed, the radio start. No, never mind. We need to adopt a resolution. Kendall gave us a resolution number. I asked that the commissioners be allowed to adopt the resolution to make Matt Quick the intern-- interim.
Interim.
Interim, thank you. You know, it's like mathematics. Sometimes I mess that up. For six months to be the Bourbon County Appraiser.
I make a motion to adopt--
Oh, she's got it ready. Good, perfect.
That we adopt Resolution 2221 to allow Matt Quick to be the interim county appraiser for six months. Do I need to read all this?
Yes, you do.
Okay. So Resolution 22-21, Board of Bourbon County Commissioners, Bourbon County, Kansas, now on this 27th day of July of 2021, the Board of County Commissioners meets in this regular session with Chair-- well-- with Commissioners O'Hara-- Harris and Beth. Whereas the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners present to KSA 19-430 and amendments thereto as directed on July 1, 1997, July 1 of each fourth year thereafter to appoint a county appraiser to a term of four years and until a successor appointed. And whereas KSA 19-430 provides that in the event of a vacancy in the office of county appraiser, the Board of County Commissioners may appoint an interim county appraiser with the approval of the Director of Property Valuation for a period not to exceed six months. It provides further that such interim county appraiser need not be an eligible appraiser as defined in KSA 19-430. Whereas the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners finds that Matt Quick should be appointed as interim county appraiser of Bourbon County, Kansas. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, that Matt Quick be appointed interim county appraiser of Bourbon County, Kansas for a period of six months from and after the date of approval by the Director of Property Valuation, as so forth below. And part of this motion--
You can adopt the resolution and then give Commissioner O'Hara the authority to sign it outside of this meeting.
And then as part of this motion also, I'd give Chairman O'Hara, when he's feeling better, to sign this outside of this meeting.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd ask for a motion to increase now in county appraiser Matt Quick's salary from its current rate to $55,000. Just for the reference for the taxpayers of our fine county, our prior county appraiser was making 73. So it's a substantial savings. Matt is from Bourbon County, has been here a long time and is looking forward to making our county a better place to live. So we appreciate him doing it. I appreciate him for doing it for that rate. But that's what we're requesting at this time.
I'd make a motion that we increase our now county appraiser, Matt Quick's salary to $55,000 from the $35,000--
$35,000.
--that he was being paid.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would also like to say, not part of the motion, but again, this is a savings for the county. To find this position, it's a blessing. Matt's doing it. He's from our county. His family's been here for years.
Yeah.
Years, you know? His dad owned a business here. And Matt's worked here in the county for years. And so I am really glad we have somebody that lives here and has lived here for many years to be our county appraiser.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much for taking the job.
And just a little, a brief history lesson and then another motion. When we opened this position up before, we had one and a half people apply. And the half was not willing to take a full-time or move here. So I mean, to find an appraiser is pretty hard to do right now. I mean, they're kind of a diamond in the rough. They're a tough position to fill, so grateful for that part. Mr. Quick is not going to fill his position. I think it'd be best if we let the commissioners have that motion and let Mr. Quick come back in another time to talk about possible some things happening within his office with employees. Maybe the next meeting when Commissioner O'Hara is here. But I mean, at least make that motion that'll allow for Mr. Quick to start looking at possible changes within his organization, both salary-wise and position-wise. But he's-- so there's another $32,000 savings that is going to occur because he's not filling that position.
Make a motion for county appraiser Matt Quick to--
Reorganize--
To reorganize his office. And to come back and let us know.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Quick, I'd suggest that probably do that next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Now we need to change the agenda.
Yeah. Do we need to just drop him or just-- I had to make a motion to drop it? Do I need to take Lynn off the agenda or just--
I would, because this is just--
Cake Camp, okay. 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 I make a motion to remove Lynn O'Hara from the Cake Camp. Discussion on the agenda?
To move it to next week.
Move it to next week?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Tiana McElroy, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Very good, thank you.
Thank you for coming to see us.
I guess I'm a little shorter than Justin. I'll move this down a little bit. Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to appear in front of you. My name's Tiana McElroy. I'm the new county attorney. I asked to be on the agenda today for a couple of reasons. As right now, as our office sets, the county attorney position has been part-time. I would like to make it full-time. I think that the elected official, the head of the office, should be there full-time, and I want to be there full-time. So that is my initial request, is to make that position full-time. There are-- I've taken a look at our budget, and with the changes that I think we'll probably have to discuss further in executive session, but with the changes that I intend on making with the other positions, attorney positions in our office, the salary request that I'm making is doable and will not cause us to go outside of our budget. What I'm requesting is 85. I think there was a meeting at some-- I have the date in which Commissioner O'Hara had asked Mr. Counselor-- County Councilor Meeks, what a fair and reasonable salary it would cost to get someone here. And he said, I think, mid eighties. And so that is what I'm requesting, those two, as far as my position goes, the elected position. And then if I may have some time to speak with you, I can explain in further detail what my plans are and how it'll work out so that it doesn't go over budget.
Okay.
Bester?
Sorry. Oops, sorry.
Hold the mic up. I would suggest she is going to probably talk about two employees. There's probably an open position and then a current employee who's with the county that's obviously identifiable. So I would suggest going into executive session for probably 10 minutes to discuss the non-elected identifiable individual. There could possibly be a change. I'm making some assumptions, but there could possibly be some change in that employment status, which obviously you don't want to talk about in public session.
And you want to do that today, right?
Yes, and that I think will help you more understand my request as well. So if you have that information, I think it would help.
Sure.
Just a clarification, just so everyone in the room understands. Obviously, we can't talk about the county attorney's position because she's an elected official. That would have to be done in an open session.
Right.
But she's obviously going to talk about those two employees.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, possible changes in the county attorney's office. For 10 minutes, it would be myself--
I guess I think that would be sufficient.
Commission-- Commissioner Harris, Mrs. McElroy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Justin, do you want to be in? Do you need to be in this?
That's up to the county attorney.
Yeah, I don't want you in there yet.
Okay. And Counselor Meeks.
Is your assistant need to be in there?
She--
She knows the budget.
Yeah, she knows the budget. She's the brains of the operation.
She better be in there then. I'm a big budget guy, so.
We'll do this-- it will be for 10 minutes and also include an--
Angel.
I'm sorry.
Angel Wilson.
Yeah, I should have known that.
Angel Wilson.
For 10 minutes, we will return here at 9:57.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd make a motion to resume normal session at 9:57 with action. I'd make a motion to allow Susan Bancroft to fill a position at the hospital and to negotiate pay rate.
I second that.
Pay.
Pay.
Sorry.
Salary. It's an hourly rate, most likely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Elected official comments. Okay, County, County Counselor? Oh, I'm sorry. We've got one here, Kendall.
I get it.
Yes, sir. A couple of things. First off, I want to start with an update on the tax sale. The publication will be this Wednesday for the parcels. It'll be ready for the first, first sale. Things are still flowing through the title company, the abstracts. I mean, obviously, they're busy as always this last 18 months. I do read that the national housing market's slowing down a little bit, so hopefully, we're going to get some abstracts here quickly to get that second sale accelerated a little bit. The rent redemption on these properties has been pretty, pretty substantial. We're getting a lot of people that are paying off their taxes, so it's, it's been working. Second issue, anybody that needs to get a list of the actual equipment with the, I guess, I don't know what to call it, the Crest T Room Building, I guess, is the way I've always known it as, downtown Rob Harrington. And Kendall actually has the receipts of the property that was purchased through that Sparks money. That, those lists will be, or that list will be available, or the actual receipts will be available. And then Rob Harrington is basically, for all intents and purposes, the person who's showing the building and going through that process. You know, having it open up for bids, you know, you don't have to accept all bids. I mean, you don't, you can, you can do what you want with them, but, you know, obviously, if someone's coming in and making a bid on it that you're not comfortable with, you don't have to approve it. But hopefully, it's going to be a lot of people that are going to bid on it, and it's going to hopefully sell. So we're hopefully going to be in a good position. And it's, it's a great opportunity to expand your business or open a new business or have a really nice property in our fine downtown. So just an option that's coming up fairly quickly. I was, I was asked by a couple of people within the county to clarify some comments that were made by Chairman O'Hare a while back concerning our web, our Facebook page. No one else's Facebook page, it's just ours. When we were talking about the fact-checking, it's only going to occur on our page. You know, we never deleted, I verified this, we've never deleted anybody from our page. And there's some filters that you can't put, you know, cuss words, naughty language, things like that on our page. But we've never taken anybody off. We've never censored anyone on that page with regards to their comments. But the fact-checking is only going to occur on our page only. We're not going, we don't have time to go out and look at everybody's page in the county to take, we're all working more than we should be anyway, so that's not going to happen. But I just want to clarify that when Chairman O'Hare was talking about that, it's just our face page specifically. I mean, I think the gravel incident was a really good example of, where about two five-gallon buckets of gravel were spun on the road, and it was, the information that was being disseminated was a whole semi had turned over. And so if that happens again in the future, the information that will be given out will be, it's not a semi, it's X, Y, and Z. Or this happened, this is what's being reported, this is, this is what we think is happening now. You know, everyone has rights to their opinions. We've talked about this before. So they can believe the information if they want to, but we're still going to put that on. And we're not planning on using it very often. I mean, it could maybe potentially happen once or twice a year. You know, I don't foresee a lot of activity from our, and just for this, for clarification, we have more than one person that has actually control of the Facebook. A lot of elected officials within the county can actually post stuff on that, that Facebook page. It's just because of COVID, Shane kind of got pigeonholed into that position. So, but he, you know, there's just not him that has control of that. So if there's something that another elected official wants to comment on that, they have the ability to do that. I mean, I don't have the ability to get on, but there are people in our organization that do. So just to bring that up.
I would suggest that if you guys are going to do this Facebook fact-checker thing, that we have some sort of written policy for it. That way, maybe people are pretty concerned about this thing. It's blown out of control. I would suggest that if you guys are going to do this Facebook fact checker thing, that we have some sort of written policy for it, um, that way, I mean, people are pretty concerned about this thing, it's blown out of control, so if we are going to have it, let's have some outline, some rules, and some, and some policy written down, that people can look at this thing and know, this is what's going on, or this isn't what's going on with it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way.
Hang on.
Yeah, yeah. So I, you know, and obviously, um, I'd have no issues with that, I don't, you know, prob, the problem with social media is, is that it's social media.
Making a lot of noise, it's not a big old crack right over here, is it?
I like that, I should use, I've used that in court once or twice, you know, pouring the glass of water, it works, so, yeah, no, I mean, with social media, it, it's, it's a hard, um, you know, demon to control, and so there's times where a policy is perfect, but, and we have, we have a policy about social media with employees, but this is different, this is being controlled by elected officials and by our IT director, so an elected official has the ability to have the First Amendment right. We're not using it as that, social media, they're not, a lot of our elected officials on purpose, I think, are not using our Facebook page to do that with, but it's just a, a way to disseminate information, it's how, we used our Facebook page during COVID, it's kind of turned into a different use than it was, you know, ten years ago, so, I mean, it, and it could change again, we don't know what it's going to be in five years, I mean, I'm, social media is changing at a really rapid rate, I don't, Twitter, I think this goes on and on, so.
But our goal is just to have the facts on there, as, as we know them.
Our facts as we know them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, people obviously can disagree with those facts, and we, we're experiencing that daily on a national, state level, local level, I mean, it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
What those facts are, I mean, for us, it's a, I mean, where I can see another example would be, um, you know, the equipment for the wind farm, which, what I'm told is only going to take about a month to get all the components here, but during that month time, let's say a component falls into the road, well, that's something that we could put on Facebook to say, hey, look, this component is here, I mean, it's going to be one of our ways that we can control traffic, but outside of that, we're not using it really as a public forum, because it's not really intended for that. It's happened, it's happened that way, and that's why we're talking about putting out the information that we know on that, on that, on that, that page, but we're not control, we're not controlling anybody else's page, we have no interest in that, we don't care about anybody else except for our page, we have, plus, we have no control to do that, I mean, I think the way I, the limited knowledge I have about Facebook, we can't go in and take something off somebody's page anyway, because you'd have to be the host, or whatever, so, or even be a member of that page, I mean, you can unfriend, defriend, put, add people on, take people off, I mean, we don't have that kind of control either, we're not kicking anybody off our page, it's, so, just a clarification, because that came up.
Okay.
Just trying to think, I got one other, well, I'll wait, I'll wait on that one, Chairman O'Hare to be here.
That is?
Yeah, we do have seventy-one active COVID cases in our county right now, too. As of this morning.
Susan's not here, is she?
No, Susan's fine, she doesn't have, she's got a kiddo issue.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Sick kiddo.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could we take a short, I need to use the restroom.
Yeah, that's a good idea, five minute break.
Paul.
I need to make a motion, just to clarify, just to.
Make a motion for a, a short break.
I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm saying that we're here.
I had to trigger in for two twenty-year-olds.
He would.
Two thirty-year-olds?
No.
Two fifty-year-olds?
That sounds like a sketch question.
That's what we're talking about right now. Morning. Good morning. It was, it was two, two, it was, uh, with, with, with the Congress. My wife, she's very proud of it. I, I've got, it's all this sketch. Yeah, it's all part of this.
Yeah, we're inside. Yeah.
What side of the?
That's not what we're talking about.
At all.
We have a list, it's, it's in, there's a big package of it. Let me get Rob, let me get Rob, he's going to touch Facebook, okay, Rob?
I thought the numbers were about west, I got to get a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the list that you have, it's, you might, yeah, we might want to give that to Kendall, too, so she can have it, we need to copy over to, just in case we need it for. There any fun? Well, supposedly, Jody, I really have to charge, we should have the stuff, but. How you doing, Sal?
Oh, I did.
She killed me.
I was done.
Did someone share it? Do you know? Hey, Jim, will you be able to come to our meeting on the seventh of August?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, unless something, emergency or something, I'm planning, it's on my calendar.
Okay.
Uh, we got, Kendall had to get some stuff.
How's work going for you?
Oh, it's always work.
Always what?
Work, work's work, you know. Never enough hours in the day.
Yeah. Make sure you have your priorities.
Those have already been done.
Pardon?
Those have already been done.
What's that?
Good. I do nothing.
I know, that, trust me, that.
Thank you, Kendall.
I have always did that.
Chad, who's that for? Yeah, I will.
You know what it is?
I don't know what it is. What's it called, Kendall? Why did?
When something's put a value, and we're taxing somebody, so this is to adjust that value.
We need to go back in session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Regular session.
Yeah.
I make a motion to go back into regular session.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
I'll do this under my time.
Okay.
Uh, public comment.
Public comment. Anybody?
Public comment.
Yeah, I think, is that any of them good?
Well, you're.
I have a comment.
We will, and limit time.
Yes, yes.
We're going to, you know, no, you're fine, Mike.
Oh.
No, you're fine, and, um, you know, try not to use non-elected people's names.
Absolutely.
And I know you're a professional, everyone, please, and limit the time, of course, but get your point across, please.
All right, uh, my name is Michael Bream. I came here today to, um, discuss some of Mr. O'Hara's things, but he's not here today, so, uh, I just don't feel right about doing that without him being here, for whatever his reasoning may be, and, uh, I guess I'm going to use this time for a couple of other things, um, again, uh, I'd like to reiterate that if we are going to have a fact checker, whatever it is, uh, I, I think it would be a great idea to have some sort of written policy for that, um, something that people can look at and understand, and know this is what it is, and this is what it's not, so, um, that would be one thing, um, I'd like to, uh, use this, some of this time to tell you, Mr. Harris, and you, Mr. Beth, that I think you guys are doing a great job, I think that you guys have the county's best interest at heart here, and, um, I like the way you interact with the community, you, when I speak to you guys, and when other people speak to you guys, I feel like you guys are actually listening, and I definitely appreciate that, um, I will go into, though, um, and this is a big concern that I've, that I've been hearing, that I have myself, is, um, I'm hoping that you guys can give me some understanding as to what happened with this grocery store, um, a lot of people are really uncomfortable with this thing, you know, um, a lot of people are, are feeling like with their, if they lose their job, is the county going to buy the mortgage on their home, or their business, or, you know, um, and people are concerned, there was a contract that was violated, um, I mean, and there's no other way around it, I mean, it was directly violated, and, um, we just kind of want to know, how can we trust any contract anymore if the next week, the commissioners can come in and just negate that contract? So, um, those would be some things that I would ask you guys to address, and then hopefully clarify a little bit, I don't know how much you can go into, um, I feel like, this is one thing I will say, um, is that I feel like the executive sessions are being overused a little bit, um, I've read over the law a little bit, and my understanding is that although some things are required to go into executive session, the list is more things that you are allowed to go into executive session, and are not necessarily required to, so, um, I would ask that on things that aren't necessarily have to, that, you know, let's get a little bit more transparency, where people can see what's going on, and maybe a lot of people don't show up to these meetings, but they sure watch them on YouTube, that's for sure, so, um, that would be something that I would ask, and hopefully for a little clarity on the grocery store, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
I would comment, you know, as far as executive session, I'm, I'm not a big supporter of that as well, but there's a lot of things we have to go into for legal reasons, to protect people's privacy, et cetera, so.
I agree. I do feel that there are some executive sessions that maybe weren't necessary, though, so, um, although I, I do understand what you're saying, and that many of them are, but, um, as many as we can get out to the public, I, I would encourage that, so, um, do you guys have anything to say about the grocery store?
I'll, I'll try to address it in my time.
Oh, okay, all right, well, I guess that's all I have, and I'll see you guys next week, hopefully.
Yeah, you can, you're, I don't think.
Mr. O'Hara is feeling a little bit better.
Yeah, it is, I'm just not close enough. Give me a sing. Um, well, uh, yeah, it's one of those things, I'm not sure what I legally can and can't say, but I will say that, um, my feeling with it is we were, we had bad, bad options, two bad options out of a really bad situation. And Justin, you may listen, so you can shut me up if I overspeak.
You never do.
Yeah. You know, uh, I'm a little tired of dealing with stuff that I had nothing to do with, number one.
Weren't you new on the commission when the grocery store grant got approved, though? You did not vote on that?
Okay. It was already approved before I got there.
Okay.
And then we did have to vote on something at the end.
Like a weekend, though, I think, or something, yeah.
But before, it had already been approved before that.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
Okay.
But we had a, a decision, in my opinion, to make, is to call the grant back, or.
Call the note.
Call the note, um, because it wasn't performing under the MOU. At that point, Baja Investments basically would have went bankrupt, and we'd have nothing, we have a building sitting empty for two years. The federal courts, uh, my understanding, are backed up a year and a half, maybe more, um, I don't know that for a fact, but I know they are backed up severely, at least a year to year and a half, therefore, that building was sitting, sitting empty.
Why not let the mortgage go back to the bank, then? Get your money back, let the mortgage go back, and let them deal with selling it.
Because it, still, it goes into bankruptcy.
Then, not us.
Actually, Rob, Rob's here, too.
Um, it, the build, I mean, we were able to take it. Put it on the tax roll quicker, I mean, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little frustrated that people are mad that we took it, now, and then people are mad that we're trying to get rid of it, well, the fact is, Rob's doing his job, you know, I mean, I know we were, the, I, I saw stuff that we were, some kind of conspiracy that, you know, no, Rob's doing his job.
I just feel like the contract, the original contract, was set up to protect us from this, and, um, if that would have been followed, I think that, you know, let the bank deal with it.
Where's the money? I mean, there's no, you know, the building.
Mr. McCott has assets, you know, um, he, he has things that he could have liquidated, or, you know, I, I don't know.
No, 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 everybody keeps talking about Bill Micho, it's Baja, it's fine, it's Baja Investments LLC, it's a business, that's not Bill.
Do you think that maybe it was constructed that way by design?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, you know, I have a business, and we have, we're going to have multiple LLCs in that business.
So then, maybe that should be something that we should look into in the future, then, that maybe these, um, we, we can't let these people get away with no liability like that.
I agree.
And I, I personally feel that, um, that he should have been held, who, this, this business owner should have been held, um, accountable, as per the contract, and we should have let the bank deal with it, um.
But the.
The only person that lost here was the county, in my opinion.
You're on the bank, you're on the bank, that's the.
Yeah, we are the bank, I mean.
That's who the mortgage is through, through the county?
It was county, you know, so the Sparks money was four hundred and five thousand, maybe four fifty, four fifty?
Four hundred and fifty was my understanding.
Um, you know, that was spent, uh.
I mean, this'll.
Unwise?
This is a conversation for next week, obviously, um, when the people that were more involved in it will be here, but, uh, you know, the state had a lot of concerns about how this thing was a high-risk investment, and I felt like the contract that was, that was, you know, um, set forth was due to some of those high risks, and then if we're not, I just, I just, I'm just so uncomfortable with, why do we have these contracts? Let's just not do contracts anymore, then, if, if this is how it's going to be.
In my opinion, that, that, we had two options, and we took the lesser of the two evil options, um, to be able to put that building back on the bank, a tax roll as fast as possible.
Okay.
And I agree with you, I've been, I mean, one choice would have been the bankruptcy, district, uh, federal courts for a year and a half, we take the building, and we're going out for a bid, we're going to get it back on the tax roll pretty quick, we hope, that's the plan, anyway, um, and I, I've asked a lot of questions regarding the state Spark Grant, and I've been told that the state did a very thorough audit on that, so.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess I have to accept that, uh, just for the record, I, I disagree with the way it went, but, you know, like I said, I, I commend you guys, I think you guys are doing the best you can, so.
Well, we don't necessarily want to accept it either, but it.
I mean, uh, let's maybe put stuff forth next time to keep people from haphazardly jumping into such foolish investments, so.
Hopefully, we don't have COVID again.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
No more pandemic, that's all for that.
And we thank you, we appreciate your opinion, we really do, so. Any more public comment, and? We don't know that answer yet. Well, we don't know what the end of the application's gonna be yet, of all the legal.
On a related note, I'm thinking of opening a grocery store here in town, so you guys should all come live.
Yeah. Do you do home delivery? So, I can't answer that question legally yet, so.
Oh, good morning, guys. My name is Ann Dare. I live in Bourbon County. Let's see, I'm gonna, uh, back up a little bit, uh, on this Facebook page. I'm glad, I say, I'm glad, um, Justin, you cleared up some things. But I still would like to go back to the motion that was made, and I'm here to ask you today to rescind that motion and make it a better motion. If, if, if it's gonna be Bourbon County official page, fact-checker business only, that's what the motion needs to say. Your, your, um, motion, uh, of the minutes that I printed off of the county website, uh, made, Clifton made a motion to answer some of the stuff out there with a fact-checker which would be reviewed by a commissioner. Uh, and in parentheses, it would depend on the subject as to which commissioner would review it, Jim seconded and all approved. I, I don't have a problem with what commissioner does what or looks at what, but, uh, this in no way states that, uh, this is gonna be pertain to the Bourbon County official page only. So, I feel that it is vital that you, uh, put that in there, um. So, yeah. You ready to do that today, or do you need to discuss it?
Nah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I assume that's what it was, and it wasn't clarified enough, that's fine, I mean. That's what it, yeah, that's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, but it certainly doesn't communicate that.
I see your note there, what you wanted to work for.
Oh, I didn't write it down.
I'll make a motion to amend a. Make a motion to amend a previous motion, um, that the, uh, the fact check is for Bourbon County, the Bourbon County page, official page.
We're gonna say Facebook.
Facebook.
All, all social media.
Uh, how about, uh, the motion would include all social media, that Bourbon County, the official Bourbon County social media pages. I'm, I'm not a social media person, so.
Is that close?
That's good.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the Bourbon County page, um, and I would encourage department heads or someone in those departments to put something out there every once in a while. This is our, I've, I've asked a lot of questions on how offices work and how, what, and what needs to happen, and, you know, depending on the time of year, maybe it would be vital to, to, uh, say, hey, guys, this is the time of year for this, from the treasurer's office or something, I don't know. Or even the appraiser's office would say, we're out and about doing appraisals, you know, and beware, you know, I don't know, I, so I, I would encourage. Well, I don't know, be aware, I don't know.
People don't like the appraisal.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, so, okay, thank you. That's all I have, guys.
Okay, any further public comment?
Yeah, who is it? I'm Clint Walker, and, uh, the comments I have has to do with notification of meetings. And, and the reason I say that is people go, well, this is the day and age of, you know, computers and technologies and cellphones and stuff. And to give you an example, and I thought it was just me, I, I, I live so far out where the hoodows are, that we actually have to have a landline to get, you know, service. For my wife to, she has a cellphone, if she stands up here on the bank with her leg, like, she might get service. So, uh, my cellphone or my landline has been out for like a week or two, two weeks, my, and it went, it got back up, and it was, uh, for a week, and I was going down the road taking a cruise and come back, and I see my neighbors out here, and I stopped and talked to them, and he goes, yep, I'm trying to get a hold of CenturyLink, mine's out. But my whole point about the notification thing, only time I get notified is if my daughter happens to be around and she calls me and says, cause she's getting an update from Kindle, which is great, but I would like to have it on the radio too, because I listen to the radio, believe it or not, you learn something. And they, they, they put it out there for you, and it's free. Newspaper, I don't recommend that, really. If, if newspaper's okay, because, but if you're doing an emergency meeting, you only do it twice, twice a week. Your regular meeting, you know, it's in here, reg, Bourbon County regular meeting, nine o'clock, that's fine.
You just like to have a meeting notification, maybe on the radio. You know, we are working on broadband.
Well, there, well.
We're putting up, we're, we have plans on putting up towers throughout the county to help every home get internet.
That'd be nice. That'd be great.
That's in the work, we've approved it.
Yeah.
And the last public comment, just, uh, an update for the citizens. How are we coming on, uh, and that's probably, uh, Susan's question. How are they coming on the human resources officer? Have they, are they getting close, or?
Well, I, I was involved in an interview process with the city of Fort Scott, and, uh, they had some excellent candidates. I'm not allowed to say what Jeremy decided yet, so.
Okay.
City manager, Jeremy, yeah. We're very close. We're very close. Any further public comment?
Uh, my name's Nancy Van Etten. I live out at Lake Fort Scott, and, um, I did, um, take some time, a couple of weeks ago after the, the meeting here and the budget meeting, and we talked about money. And I did, um, spend some time with our sheriff and, and with the undersheriff and the, um, the fellow in charge of the correctional. And, uh, just to, um, it helped me understand where their budget is and how, how they have to go about and with their scheduling of their staff. And, um, I think it's important that, that, um, we consider the budget to include another, um, deputy for the sheriff's office. I think that would help them cover their shifts better and plus not have so much overtime, and cause when, when they have a case, they have to follow it all the way through, so if you work a night shift, if you have to go during the day to the court, then you have to go, you have to go there, even though you're a night shift, you have to follow that process through. We know what it is like a nursing, you have to follow things through, otherwise it won't get accomplished properly. So, I think another deputy is something that would be very important, and if, if you haven't met with him individually, it might be a good idea to just, to meet with him, and whether Susan can meet with him individually or with, um, uh, Ben or Bobby to actually kind of s- see the structure of their department and how they have to, to do things, I think that might be helpful. Um, it's certainly helped me. I've, that's, I think it's probably the, the second or third time I've heard it, because we had him talk to our lake advisory board, uh, like, two years ago about what they do and how they have to do it, so I think it's something to consider.
Thank you.
Is there more budget hearings happening, or is it, is it gonna be this afternoon?
This afternoon, yeah.
Do you think Susan's not gonna be here? Is it not gonna be happening then?
No, not today.
Okay. Right, so then it'll be noted on email or, or on the radio?
Lynn needs to be here, we all need to be here.
Yeah, it's, and it's getting there.
Well, we appreciate your comment, but, uh, an extra deputy is a great thing, but this budget's gonna be tough.
Yeah, well, you got another thirty-five thousand dollars, so, thinking about that, there were a couple of things that, that Susan talked about in that afternoon meeting of, there was a couple of things that she wasn't sure of, why, what is that money for, you know? So, those are kind of questions to, to really figure out, is that really needed? Every single thing. I know it takes time, but we gotta do it, otherwise, you know, we wanted the promise that we don't want our, how much money we pay in taxes to go up. Meal levy comes down, we get the appraisal values up, so, it's issues.
That's changed by law, there's, we can add, it's called, and I have a big old note there, revenue neutral rate.
Revenue neutral rate.
Valuation goes up, meal levy's gotta come down to match the existing revenue.
Yeah, and what you're seeing in the paper, all these taxing entities are having hearings to increase rev, to go over that revenue neutral rate. That's a concern of mine.
And, and that's, here's a concern of mine, Bourbon County taxes too high.
Yes.
They never mention our other friend entities out there, taxes maybe going up, but it's a group, it's not just Bourbon County.
That's right. I went to, I went to the, um, community college board meeting last Monday, and, uh, I didn't comment because you have to, ahead of time, you have to, um, send out paperwork to the, um, to the secretary to get approved to be on the agenda. Anyway, um, one thing that did, was discussed, was a pay raise for all staff members, not, not the faculty. Faculty got their raise, and then this was for, for staff members, which is important, you know, it was, it was a thousand eighty dollars for the year, for, you know, and when you think of full-time, that's twenty-eighty hours, so when you calculate that out, that's eighty-five cents an hour raise. Take a deep breath. It's pretty good. Wouldn't that be nice if we could do that for employees?
Well.
I mean, that's, but there, there was no discussion, you know, it's like, no discussion about it.
I've got some ideas, I'm sure Clifton and Lynn have some ideas, how we could possibly give some pay raises. We desperately need them.
Yep.
And we'd need them a long time, but we're gonna lose some good employees if we don't, so, we're gonna work hard on that, so.
Yeah, it's tough. Yeah, the last time there was the, the exit interview for.
We'll lose more if we don't try to get a, but you know, salary increase is a good thing.
It is.
But meal increases not.
There you go.
So.
That's a good point, yeah.
We just gotta be, we just gotta operate smart.
Yeah, and, you know, really establish what your priorities are every meeting, every day, every, every year.
Because I was looking at the budget yesterday, and, uh, fifteen and sixteen, we rolled and bridged, took a three hundred thousand and fifteen, now a hundred and some at sixteen, which we had to do that, and I'm sure we didn't get enough done, but we kept going forward, trying to get more done with four hundred thousand of that money. My point is, I think we all can do that, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, and maybe it's.
I think we have to.
Taking, you know, are you guys willing to take a pay cut? I mean, their salary's thirteen thousand, isn't it, a year?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty, twenty thousand, so. Yeah, so, so, you know, there's.
I did not give myself a raise, I'm gonna clarify that.
Okay. Just, you know, those are.
You can fact-check that one.
See, it's on that one, the fact-check.
So, those are things to consider, you know, everybody's talking about, you know, staying within budget, and if we wanna give raises, you know. Uh, it's difficult, but, you know, what, what, what are you commissioners for? I mean, for our public.
Fifty, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
And, and I know Clifton, but going public works director for this job, I took a forty-five thousand dollar a year paycheck. And it's worth it, I mean, I'm enjoying this, so.
Because you're retired, right, is the retirement?
Well, I thought I was.
Yeah. Well, a lot of us volunteer and don't get anything, so, you know, there you go. There's things, things that we do. Also, um, I think, Justin, did you say there were seventy-one confirmed active cases of COVID in our county, COVID-nineteen? Just wanna encourage people, get your vaccine, if you haven't had your vaccine yet, go ahead, go get it, you don't have to tell anybody you did it, but just go do it, uh, just to protect our communities and make sure we can have the supplies we need and that you can take care of the people's health needs, and these hospitals around us can take care of it. We just, that's a lot of people that can have devastating long-term effects. It's not just when you have COVID, it's the long-term effects too, so, I just would hope we could encourage people to do that.
The debate on the vaccine will go on forever, so.
Yeah, we need to have the truth, have the truth out there and people can, you know, rethink it, so, hoping, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Anyone else public?
Hi, I'm Mary Peaberton. Um, I was going to speak to the fact-checking issue, you clarified quite a bit of it. Um, I, I don't do Facebook, so some of what I say might not be the way it works. But if we're talking now, this is strictly Bourbon County's Facebook page. Is there not a way that you can turn off comments so that you can put your facts out there on the official page, but people don't comment on them?
We've decided not to, I think, well, not me, I think that decision's been made so that we can have the open forum. I think the filter, I verified this, the filter is no bad words. And that's what the filter setting's been set at, but if you wanna go in and comment about how road, how bad the roads are, or what ditch is bad, or you have the ability to do that, or you don't believe in the X, Y, and Z, you have the ability to do that on our Facebook page. And that's where the, the gravel that fell out of that truck, that's where, kinda where this started from. And we're comfortable with that, we want that. We wanna know that two hundred and forty is shut down because of low water, or high water, not low water, but high water. So, we want those comments on there, I think. I think that's you guys' choice, but that's why that's on there, that open comment. I think that's why, that's, I, I'm su, that's why that's there, there's filters on there, so you can't say the, you know, that for.
Yeah, I don't, I. Personally, I guess I don't wanna, um, if somebody wants to put a comment on there, they can, and I don't, I don't wanna censor that.
I think maybe fact-checking isn't the right term, but for what you're wanting to do, um, but, because, I mean, if we wanna fact-check, I can name a lot of statements that have been made by officials in the commission meetings that are totally not accurate, and you want us to come here and call you guys out on fact-checking?
Well, I, I believe, and, and I'm not a big fan of Facebook. I believe our intent is to, as with the gravel hits that road, people was concerned, cause it was a semi-load of gravel, it was about too shovelful. Our goal is to inform the public of any safety issues or get the facts out there. I mean, it wasn't a semi-load, it was too shovelful.
That would be a good use of it, but do you need somebody spending taxpayers' time and money to fact-check? If somebody is posting something that's not accurate, why doesn't somebody just, you said that several people have access to posting on the Facebook page, why don't they just clarify it?
And I think that's the idea, that's my idea of it.
What Shane does, I mean.
Is just to clarify the statement.
I don't wanna get into he said, she said, what said.
Yeah, that's the way it sounded like you guys, the purpose of this, what it was talked about previously.
Make a comment regarding Bourbon County or our activities, the commission, or any departments, or, or a bad road, or what, you have the opportunity to get on there and comment. It's not about calling the commissioners' names, or, I know you wouldn't anyway, but things like that. That's not the intent of it, is to inform the public and make it better.
Yeah. And to that point, the more open you can be, the better, if during commission meetings, when you're, um, somebody addresses a concern or asks questions, if you can respond to that in some way, I think that goes a long way. And I'm not picking on you two, cause you've not been here long, and from what I've seen, you're doing a good job of communicating and answering. But let me say, previous, previous commissions, you would come in and speak, and honestly, I don't think they even listened. They never responded, you never got any kind of answer to what you were asking, and.
Give us a few more months, Mary, we'll make you mad.
No, again, I think you guys are doing great, and you've said a lot of things that I do appreciate, um, but, anyway, that's, we're gonna move on from the fact-checking, that's not really what I was here for.
I hope someone comments on that more, kind of a question, cause they don't have the facts, they should be asking questions, what the facts are, I hope, anyway.
Okay, um, I'm gonna comment just a little bit more on Michael's, I think his name was, statement. The real concern is not necessarily the one building and how that was done, it's the fact that previous commissions have not done a good job of overseeing these things, of looking at contracts before they sign them, of what I'm gonna call making a lot of bad deals. And the Spark is a perfect example, there's no way, six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five thousand should've ever went to that one building in the first place. I mean, that was more than twenty-five percent of all the, the money that went to that one project, which everybody knew was a very high risk. I mean, you didn't have to have a market study or anything to know that. It was a high-risk venture. And, again, I know that was our economic development person, but the commission had oversight of that, and nobody provided that oversight of where those funds were being spent. You can't let one person have full control to make decisions like that.
It's not that way now.
I, I appreciate that very much, because we've had a lot of really bad deals that have been made just in the past year.
We, as a commission, we spend a lot of time talking about subjects, I mean, very thorough. And I'm confident that going forward, we'll make the best decisions we can that you elected us to do, and we'll try. Will we make mistakes? I'm sure, but we're gonna try to do our best, that's what we're doing with the projects now, we're trying to make the best decision for the taxpayer, get that building back on tax road. Make it active, it's a nice building, we want it, we want something in that thing, and let them pay taxes, so that's what we're, that was, as Clifton, that's the worst of the options.
Yeah, I understand that.
Best are the worst options, so.
I mean, you guys were stuck cleaning up the messes that were made previously. And there's probably a lot of, you know, ongoing legal issues that prevent you from speaking on it. And, you know, that's all you need to say is, this thing may not be over yet, we can't talk about it.
Yeah, like I said earlier, just three minutes ago.
Um, okay, moving on, budget. I know budget's a big deal, it is to me, I pay a lot of taxes in this county. I did appreciate hearing this morning a couple of different departments that are making changes in their office to maybe streamline things, become more efficient, lower, or at least not increase, um, their budget, which is good. I think we could do that with all of our departments. Salaries make up thirty-six percent, I believe it is, of all the money spent by the county. Um, for every dollar spent in wages, seventy cents is spent in benefits, approximately, I might be off by a penny or two, but that's a lot of benefits. And I think even just in the last few weeks, it's been mentioned by you guys that, you know, we don't attract employees on salary, we track them on benefits. But, you know, a lot of people anymore, the benefits are of less concern than the money they're getting on their paycheck. I have learned from previous meetings that there's never been a benefit statement given out to employees so that they know what the true cost of their employment is. I would suggest that you do that, those are really easy to generate, or they should be, really easy to generate. Where you can give each employee that's, that is, um, personalized directly to them, that says, this is what you earned in salary. This is how much extra the county paid for your social security, your keepers, your health insurance, your everything, paid time off. And paid time off is a big one. I don't know exactly what all the benefits are, but from what I've heard here in meetings, employees, if they've been here for more than a year or so, they're earning three weeks of vacation time is what I've heard, ten, two weeks of holiday time, and I don't know how much sick time, maybe a week. But that's, that's six.
I don't think those are good numbers.
Six or so weeks, that's the way it's been presented. Again, I did not, I did not, um, have time to come in and ask for any of that core information, but, um, that's something that could easily be asked of employees, you know, instead of having six weeks of paid time off. Could we increase your hourly rate, you know, by a dollar an hour, and you only get two weeks of vacation time? Or, you know, we cut down to eight holidays instead of ten holidays? Or we eliminate sick time altogether and you use your disability insurance benefits to cover if you're off for more than a day or two. Um, but I'm just making suggestions out there.
Unless we make changes in the insurance funds, I mean, changing someone's vacation's not gonna put more money in the pot for pay raises. It will change the productivity of that employee not being gone so much, but it doesn't change the dollar amount that we're allowed in our budget to pay those employees, so. Unless you cut insurance benefits, something like that, that's real money.
I agree that, that reducing the pay time off does not reduce the amount of money that's paid to them, but it does affect the productivity. You know, you've got a lot of lost productivity, every day somebody is not at work. So in reality, you are saving money. You're potentially reducing overtime, you should be reducing overtime, not potentially, it should be definitely reducing overtime. Again, overtime's not just extra money, it's time and a half more money, time and a half, you know, more of your benefits. So all of those things, I'm just suggesting that, that they be looked at. I think the advisory committee to look at the health insurance is a nice step. It alleviates you guys from having to do a lot of research that maybe isn't in your forte. And I would maybe like to see that expanded, when you have other big issues come up, that would've been a great tool for the wind project. Could've saved the county a lot of money on that project, we lost a lot of money in that, the agreements that were signed on the wind project. Because the commissioners at the time didn't want to educate themselves or spend any time to learn about what it is they were getting into. And my opinion, which I think I can back up with facts, those, those agreements were not good for the county. I mean, we basically are crossing our fingers, hoping that, that we're treated right, because there's a lot of stuff in there that just, you know, either directly or indirectly is costing the county money every day. So, um, let me see, what else? I guess basically budget-wise, I think, um, just to kinda summarize, we need to really look at the detail on the budgets. Not just, well, this is what we had last year, we're gonna keep it the same, or we're only going to increase by two percent for salaries or something like that. Look at where we can increase the efficiencies. I know inflation, especially in the past year, inflation is skyrocketing. And some of those things are out of your control, but not all of them are. And I think we need to look at, at where the money is being spent and how we can do it more efficiently. And that could be, you know, in the road department, for example, it could be looking at, you know, contracting out some issues. You know, there's not everything, we, we do not, you might disagree with this, but my opinion is, we as a county cannot do everything better than other people can. Sometimes other people do things as good or better than we do, and we need to consider that at times too. So. That's all I'm gonna talk about right now. If I have time, I'll delve into some of these issues and get back with you again.
Thank you, good to see you again, been a while. Any other public comments? Okay, commission comment?
I, I agree, Mary, that our PTO doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Two weeks, that's pretty standard across the country at this point. Um, and that's an earned PTO, not, not, here you go, day one, you get two weeks, you can go to work one day and take the next two weeks off. Or take the next two weeks off and then quit, and you get paid to come to work for one day and get paid for three weeks. I would also agree that I'm not, personally, I can, I am concerned more about my paycheck than the benefits. And I don't know about everybody else, but that's me. I've never been a big benefits person, but I've also worked for myself for a long time, so, you know, I had to provide my own benefits. So yes, PTO is absolutely something, in my opinion, we need to look at. Uh, I think there's some misconception or mistruths or whatever on the, the agreement we went into with Noble Health. The meeting we had Friday was, was not a spur-of-the-moment thing, it was a clarification from a motion, I actually made on July sixth. I know some people thought we did that in a hurry, it was not rushed at all, it was just needed clarified, and so that's what we did. The study they are doing, I've heard some numbers, people say it's too much. You know, I've heard people say, oh, it shouldn't cost more than ten thousand dollars, it shouldn't cost more than fifty thousand dollars, whatever else. The fact matter is, is if that, if that study can be done for that, and those people think that, I could get them a job with about any healthcare organization in the country. They, I mean, I, this is going to be rude, but unfortunately, they don't know what they're talking about. Some of the information that they will be going after and are currently going after costs more than fifty thousand dollars just to access. Now, and you cannot Google it, you can't get it off of Wikipedia, you can't get it off of Facebook, because, you know, the, the, um, besides the fact that Noble Health is a pass-through, no different than we're a pass-through for multiple organizations. My understanding, that we owe the money and we divvy, you know, I, um, Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, I think, we're a pass-through for that, is that correct, Justin? My understanding, I've been told that, but we, that money comes here and we give it to them, is that a correct statement, Kendall?
Not anymore, but that was, that's how it used to work.
That's how it used to work, okay, so not anymore. That's all Noble Health is, is a pass-through to do a re, and I don't like the term feasibility study, because, um, that's really not what it is, it's a reopening study. It's, it's, it's a study that's, uh, that delves into Medicare, Medicaid, the physical aspect of the building, um, the legal parts of reopening a hospital. You're talking thousand, two thousand dollar attorneys it takes to do this. Your cousin, your friend cannot do it, these are trained professionals that are strictly trained to do that thing. And I know where I, uh, I've worked, we had a program that was paid for that gave us very little access to Medicare information. To, um, they used it for their sales team. That said, which doctors, how many Medicare patients have heart failure and COPD and this and that, that scene. Um, by ex-doctor, by Dr. John Doe at CHC or Via Christi or whatever. Well, that one program cost a million dollars, just for that program for the company I worked for. So, so to say this study could be done for eight or ten thousand dollars, just, is just not true. And you ask us to be better, um, to listen to the experts. This is what we're doing. We're not going out and just winging it that, by gosh, we're gonna open up a hospital. We are listening to the experts, and that costs a lot of money to do. You know, again, I mean, I can't, you know, some of that, the government doesn't give that information for free. I don't care that you think you can Google it, that's not true. It, it, it costs money, and it costs a lot of money to gain that information. So, and you know what, at the end of the day, we may come back and say, it doesn't work. And then you all can come and yell at us. I'll take it. But it could work, and we're not spending property tax dollars to do it, we're spending money that was intended this way. We made a decision, in my opinion, with the best information we had at the time of how that money is to be spent. Now, could the government change that today, tomorrow, and say, you know what, you could spend it differently? Maybe, but our decision was based off of the decision that they had at that time of how that money was to be spent, which is on healthcare and broadband. Roads and sewers are in there, but we don't qualify for that. We can't divvy it up to all the taxpayers, we can't lower the mill levy with that money. Besides, we only get it for two years. So my opinion, my vote, was based off the fact that I'm going to spend that money, how it was to be spent, on the experts that know what to do with it. And to give us an expert opinion, instead of winging it like something happened downtown last year. And I'm telling you right now, a million dollars, it will probably cost more than that to do it. Of which, they are going to spend that money themselves, Noble Health is gonna front that. If it comes back and it works, they will dump twelve to fifteen, twenty million dollars in Bourbon County in the first two months. It's worth the risk, in my opinion, to get an expert opinion from multiple people, not just Noble Health. It is from multiple people, Abacus, B K D, Posonelli, Hush Blackwell, I mean, um, it's a company out of, company out of Boston, it's a healthcare company that you have to pay to get that information. All of which, they were also going to let us have those invoices, this is where your money was spent. There's no secret, they're not hiding it, Noble Health isn't hiding it. But I do know, you know, like I said, if, if, if there's somebody out there that can do that study for fifty thousand dollars, by gad, I can get you a job in any healthcare organization in the country. David, I mean, it just isn't possible, so, but that's, um, as nice as I can be at this, I wanna be meaner, so.
Well, I'd like to add, Clifton and Rob's done a fantastic job, worked with Noble Health, you know, and as he mentioned, we've contacted the experts, but we're not. And I feel like, as your elected commissioner, it's our job to do the best job we possibly can for our county, and that's a hospital, if possible. We're gonna find out if we can do it or not, and if we fail, you can yell at us, but if we make it, we'll be your hero. So, I hope so, cause we'd need it really bad, so. Back on the, uh, vacation, no employer earns any vacation during the first six months of employment in Bourbon County, so.
I didn't know that.
In the handbook here, so. Handbook says you don't earn any vacations the first, you don't accumulate any vacation the first six months of employment. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it starts your seventh month, yeah. Now, your sick leave starts. Yeah. Right, you can't use a sick leave until a certain time, so it's not a freebie for six or seven, ten months.
It takes you, you have to work ten years before you get.
A month, ten years, you get a month. That's why I didn't know if I'd missed the.
So I was misinformed and misspoke. I was given bad information.
By some expert.
Kendall, I'm not blaming Kendall. She did not, she did not give me that, I'm kidding.
Is the commissioner aware of the breach of contracts, is there been filing against, no, I'm sorry, I was.
Yes, but you can come up if you'd like.
I better heard the, the comment of, um, the vacation and stuff. A lot of people don't work, realize that we only work thirty-five hours, so we don't get that extra five hours. So we don't get that extra five hours a week, which is 20 hours a week. And if you take that times what a lot of people work, even like the city, what their pay is, that's a lot of money. So to have the extra, some of the extra benefits, some of the extra, you know, paid days off and some of the benefits that we have, that's kind of compensation. I've been here 17 years, and they took it back to 35 before I even started.
35 hours a week?
35 hours a week. They did that to try to save money. So even 17 years ago, they were trying to save money. So they knocked every office down to 35 hours to try to save money. There is a couple of offices that do work 40 hours, their jobs, offices are a little bit different, but courthouse is open 8:30 to 4:30. We don't close for lunch or anything like that. Our services are open during a lunch hour if we need to try to be more accommodating for the public, that's something that we can look at for the future. But we do not get vacation. We start accumulating at the seventh month. You accumulate one day a month. You don't get your full two weeks until, or 15 days until you've been here three or two years as of January 1st. So once you've been here, two solid years as of January 1st, you get 15 days. Your sick day, you don't start, get to take, start taking them, you start accumulating them from then month one, but you can't take them until after like your seventh month, and they do roll over. But you don't automatically get days off, and you have to build them up. So, and once you're here 10 years, you get a month. I'm an elected official, I've never taken even a solid week off. But most of, most people do not know, and when they apply for a job, they don't realize that they're applying for a job that's only 35 hours a week. You know, I've had several people pull out, but that's the first thing I tell them, that it's only for 35 hours. And then, one of the other things I wanted to address is the transparency. There's a lot of things that they can't talk about here, just like the Mercy Hospital, you know, the way rumors get started, I could say something to Jim and they'd go around this room, and by the time it gets back to Ann Dare, it's something totally different. You figure that in this town? They have to go into executive session. Whether we want it, whether we like it, or whether we don't, there's a lot of things that they can't say out here in the public because the way Fort Scott just, everything, they are being as transparent as they can possibly be on some of this stuff. I agree that downtown building was not their fault. But when you got the lesser of two evils, from what I hear and what I understand, you know, I'm in the deeds part. When there's the bankruptcy, if it was to go to bankruptcy, it can take two and a half years to get through a bankruptcy. And we want to sit up building for two and a half years? When we take this le, this lesser of the evil and we get it back on the tax roll in six months? You know, I just don't want you guys to be attacked for certain things that I know that some of the public doesn't understand, and especially on some of the benefits, that, you know, we don't work full-time, and that you guys do sometimes. We have no choice but to do going into an executive session. There's times that I hate to go into an executive session for something that I don't think is that big of a deal, but it's the law. I absolutely make no law, I make no, my prices are made by the state, made by resolution, you know, I'm easy-peasy. I don't get no say. It comes in all, you know, so I just wanted to make a couple of things clear. You raise your hand there.
There is no law that requires you to go into an executive session. Executive sessions are allowed under the law for those particular reasons, 13 of them, I think there are. But you're not ever required to, so.
Right, right.
Okay. But there are a lot of issues that do not need to be discussed in executive session that are. I'm going back to the windmill thing because there was a lot going on there. They have the ability to discuss some of the items in open session. Not every single thing having to do with windmills had to be in closed session. That's just the way it is.
You're beating bad oars there, though. We didn't know.
I know. And that's the other thing I want to clarify. I was not talking with you guys about these bad deals. I thought I said that if I didn't, I meant.
You did, you did.
You're cleaning up all the stuff previously. I'm looking for going forward, and I think the Noble Health is a good example of you guys actually making sure that it's being done right this time by doing a study instead of just, you know, accepting and, you know.
Thank you, thank you.
Trying to hold on to the hospital and bring somebody else in, and maybe they don't make it. I think the study is vital to know whether it is actually feasible, what kind of healthcare is feasible to have, and it should provide a lot of valuable information even beyond just the hospital and healthcare about different businesses being able to locate here, you know, should be able to give our economic development people more ammunition for maybe recruiting businesses that could actually make a go here, help us figure out some of our housing problems, and there's a lot to be gained from that. So I do commend you for doing the study ahead of time. Another item that she just mentioned, if people are only working 35 hours a week, that just makes your benefit costs that much higher of a percentage compared to your salaries. And again, another good reason to, I'm not saying changes need to be made, I'm saying they need to be looked at. And if a lot of people, I find in the business that we run, that for the most part, people are the same, have the same feelings that, just were mentioned, that I consider my salary more vital to me every week than my benefits are. I'm just asking, why don't you find out if that's the case for the majority of your employees? Find a happy medium in there between the time off and the time paid. I also, I didn't mention this, but at the same time, I think it's important that people are paid according to their abilities, according to their job performance, and that should be, you maybe need to rethink how government operates, because I don't think all these things are mandated by law that you do it this particular way or that particular way. I think you have the flexibility of being able to set pay scales, pay structures that reward performance and not longevity. Okay, I'm going to shut up now.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Richard Clark. At times, well, avoidance is not a successful trait, and going into executive session can be an avoidance. And I've had a lot of management training through the years, and that was one of the main stages, communication's a big factor, but avoidance, and I was asked several times, why do I keep negative people in the group? Why don't I move them to a different area? Well, they brought out the negative points, the things that we need to look at, the things that could cause us to fail. So if we could not avoid that, we might be more successful by not going to executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Okay, good, we're getting ready to go here, so go ahead.
That's quick one.
All right.
Come on up here, Mike.
So, is the commission aware of and able to offer some clarity on the multiple breach of contract suits that Noble Health has against them, and the fact that they have a high-ranking executive officer that is unable to be allowed into any type of federal healthcare program due to some sort of fraud thing that he had going on in the past? Is this something that was looked into, or is this, I mean?
I'm fully aware of it.
You are aware of it? Can you offer some clarity? I mean, how is him being banned from federal healthcare programs going to affect us here if we do decide to go forward with this thing? If they decide? Not at all?
It's a moot point.
Because Medicaid and Medicare are federal healthcare programs, aren't they?
Yep.
And that won't affect us at all?
Nope.
Okay, all right, good enough for me, then.
Okay. And that it? I need to make a motion to cancel the budget work session at 1 o'clock today.
I second that. And we better tell people why.
Yes, because, well, because Lynn's not here.
And Susan also isn't here.
And Susan's not here, so the group's not here, they need to be here to work on this issue, so.
Yeah.
Just, that's it.
So I'm not, you just want me and Jim to do it? We'll just start just marking everything up?
Yeah. I'm done already, so, I know what I'm going to do, I don't know what they're going to do.
Now, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, the, another thing, and I could talk for probably an hour, but I'm not going I saw something about raising taxes, and somebody said about raising taxes and having these hearings and whatnot. And we had to do that over the phone because, or maybe last week, I was quarantined, my daughter was sick with COVID, and she did have symptoms. So it's real, the Delta variant is a very real thing. But we had, basically, my understanding, and I would ask Jim if he agrees with me, we bought us more time to go through the budget. We're not, we're not, I mean, we had to state it that we're having a hearing, whatever, but it just buys us more time, is that your, that was my understanding.
Yes, the hearing for the revenue neutral rate, which would allow us to increase if we chose to, but, Chris was right, it gives us more time to work on the budget.
To try to lower it.
And lower it. Our goal is to lower it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But it bought us more time, you're right, so.
So, I mean, that is, that's my understanding, so.
Confirm what you're lowering. What are you, what are you going to lower?
Mill levy.
We're thinking about lowering your salary.
Your salary. Yeah, our goal, our goal is to lower the mill levy.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we can't accomplish that, at least stay neutral, valuation go up, and the mill levy will drop to equate the numbers. So I will, and I'm just one commissioner, I will not vote for a tax increase for Bourbon County. I'm just one, so. Anything else, folks? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I feel like it was a productive meeting today, actually.
Fun.
Aye, aye.